Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. We have the agenda presented to you, is there any changes?
Pam is unable to make it to the band shell.
Okay, so we will take Band Shell project update.
I can update a little bit if you want.
Me too, I drive by it every day.
If you want to, we'll leave it on there then.
I'll let her.
Alright, any other changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane.
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, May 17th, 2017, regular meeting. Is there any changes, corrections, clarification? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 17th, 2017, regular meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor.
I'd like to abstain from that.
Okay, alright. Be four in favor, none against, one abstention. Public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the public? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the public?
There's nobody here.
There isn't anyone here, so.
Third time now.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings, it now brings us to our reports and presentations, Band Shell project update.
Just update a little bit on behalf of Pam Boardman, if you've been by the Band Shell, you'll see that they have started the project, they have, the contractor is in there with the scaffolding, they have repaired all the, where all the light sockets were, they've, they've taken those light sockets out and they have stuck with that over and they've put, the light blue is the primer, and then as they go, they'll prime and paint the inside, and then they're gonna pressure wash and paint the outside, and they plan to have all of that done by time the first band in the, concert in the park, which is next Wednesday night. Then when that's done, then Roger can start doing his painting. I believe we got, moved forward on the painting because his other project got delayed, so we should start seeing some work happening in there fairly shortly. And they were able to, successful, and they received another $10,000 grant from the Central Minnesota Arts Board, so, so that's good, and so they're well on their way. So there's still some other things that are still in the works, but at least the painting, the priming, the cleaning, and now the mural itself are getting, getting done, so.
Are they still planning on rewiring or putting the new lights in there?
They are planning on some lights, but they won't be mounted within the stucco, there'll be lights along the top shining down onto it, so you could put it on the artists and the, on the bands or on the mural itself. And that project is gonna come secondary, they're waiting to try to raise some more funding for that part of it.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I guess just one comment, that if you go on the web and type up Sock Center Band Shell, there's a, there's an artist's rendering of it, and I pulled it up this morning at work and got a couple wow's out of it, so I guess I'd encourage anyone that wants to look at it, it's, it's gonna be pretty neat.
Any other comments? Okay, move on to our action items, approve appointment of seasonal staff?
The city council on May 17th had approved us to advertise for, for two seasonal summer staff positions for the public works department, and we received five applicants, three of them were interviewed this weekend, we do have a recommendation for two of those to be appointed as seasonal pending background checks, those two are Grant Strass and Joseph Stathther.
Okay, any comments, questions? Just let the council know, I'm going to abstain from this considering I know most of the applicants, so I'm not going to be involved in this part of that. Do I have a motion to approve the seasonal staff appointments of Grant Strass and Joe Stadler?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Keith, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane, any other comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, aye. Motion carries four in favor, none against.
I'm sorry, one more, what was the second name?
Joe Stadler.
Joseph Stathther.
Stadler.
Stathther, S.T.A.D.T.H.E.R.
Thank you.
7B, approve resolution 2017-36 authorizing purchase and sale of vehicle.
As you know, at the last council meeting, we reported that the operations committee recommended that we bring forward a proposal for a replacement of one of the public works pickups, we're looking at replacing the 1997 Dodge that was also, also known as Tom's truck or the maroon Dodge. The replacement was proposed in 2016, but was removed from the budget, and that was, and it is currently in the 2017 budget at $30,000 by a transfer from the sinking fund. We did get the state bid, and the state bid for the 2017 Chevy Silverado from Ranger at $31,997.36, we took that to Welly, and he bid that same truck at $30,356, and then a similar truck at John Wees Ford for $28,953. We do have some additional costs in, that either we can do now or bring them forward is, would be a lift gate, Tom's truck does have a lift gate, it's been transferred truck to truck, and it's almost 40 years old, and so we think we probably shouldn't be using that lift gate anymore. We did get a estimate for a new lift gate for this truck of $2,800, and then in the future, we'll probably be looking at a plow for this truck, so it is capable of having a plow, it has a heavy-duty alternator and the snowplow package on it already as part of the state bid. These do not include licenses and the motor vehicle tax, this is not exempt from sales tax, because motor vehicles tax is a different tax, so we would have that. We looked at the trucks and we tried to make them as comparable as possible between the Ford and the Chevy, the difference between the two is the Chevy is what's called a double cab, which is the, the main regular cab, and then it's got the smaller backseat, but the door opens like a crew cab, where the Ford is actually a crew cab, because their extended cab, the door opens more like a suicide door, if you're familiar with that. So the difference between these two trucks is really, the Chevy is more the, the double cab, or what Ford would call a super cab, but the Ford is a regular crew, because that is what they, what they make, so. Last time we purchased a, in 2014, we purchased two vehicles, first we purchased a Ford from John Wees Ford, and then later that year, we purchased a Dodge from Dan Welly, so if that makes a difference to you.
Okay, questions?
I believe the lift gate is something that should happen. I'm not totally sold on the snowplow when we get to that point, unless we can definitely show that we're gonna be using it more than just up at the arena to push snow.
Yeah.
You know, we got the tool cat, and we got other things to be able to push those piles away without having to buy a plow for it.
Lift gate, 40 years old, you're kinda reaching that life.
Well, there's a lot of other things that need to be lifted in the back of a truck where a lift gate would definitely help, so.
And, and the lift gate or the Tommy gate that we have is actually through the state bid, so we got the best price that we could at $28,05 for that.
So what's the recommendation from public works as far as which one, do I take it, the lowest bid would be the Ford, right?
Yeah, um, we don't necessarily need the full crew cab, that would be maybe one part of it, that, that truck would be a little longer, but, uh, so we're able to show you that it is.
Do the backseats in the, on the crew cab fold down so you could haul stuff inside the cab?
They tip up, yeah.
On the Ford?
Yeah.
How about the Chevy?
Yeah.
They, they both do.
They do too?
They both do, the Ford would have more space, but it, then of course, it makes the truck longer overall.
Right, but I think that's only like about four inches or something, maybe six.
Um, the, I have the wheelbases, if that's, it's, the, the double cab Chevy is 144.2 inches, and the Ford is, is it one, uh-oh, what does it say on there, 160?
Okay.
No concerns with the aluminum?
Yeah, 160 inch wheelbase versus a 144 inch wheelbase.
Okay, then that's another point, which, is it aluminum body on the Ford compared to steel on the Chevy?
Any concerns, sir?
Matt, you need to come up and answer some questions.
The Ford with the new unibody versus the steel one for the Chevy?
Is there any concerns on that, or?
I don't believe this is a unibody in a three-quarter ton.
Okay.
I guess that could be corrected, but I don't know for sure. But I don't think the three-quarter ton is a unibody.
Okay, so it's not aluminum that we know of?
No. I believe so, but that would be something to ask that I did not.
Right, 'cause about the time we drop something in the back and it's aluminum or something, then we got a problem, not that it won't hold up, but.
Little more expensive to fix if there's something to.
I don't really see that being a giant issue.
I have heard that insurance is a little higher on that, because of the cost to repair.
Sure, okay. Well, basically, I would think we'd be going with the low bid, would be the Ford. I've, I've got a feeling that our street department will find a way to use the extra space in that crew cab, whether they say they know they need it or not.
We will, the only difference was is this truck is longer.
Right.
In a whole, which isn't really great in town, but it doesn't.
Yeah, it isn't gonna be that much of a difference.
No, it's not life and death.
'Cause the bot, the box length is about the same on both then? Both six-foot boxes?
We did get six on both, yep.
Okay.
So the big difference is in the cab, 'cause that Chevy cab is actually, it's like the trucks that the PUC have now.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a, it's, the double cab is probably 10 to 12 inches narrower, or shorter in the back, so this is a lot more cab space, there's no doubt about it.
Okay.
So in a sense, you do get more truck for less money, so I can see your point.
Yeah.
Especially for the numerous uses that we use, I think we need as much truck as we can get.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Vicky, what was the quote on the lift gate that you got?
It's 28.
2800.
And that's an aluminum lift gate, so it, and then it's a 38 inch wide, so it's got a 10 inch top that folds, so it's actually wider than the other ones, you can get a card on them and lift it.
Okay.
So it's, it's a much better one than any of them that we have currently, too.
I'm just seeing the cost, the diff, the, the cost difference between the Chevy and the Ford would pay for half of that.
True.
Lift gate.
Yeah, and then the lift gate, I do believe is tax exempt, because that's an accessory, but the truck itself is.
Okay.
Where the, we still owe tax.
And it's actually, you know, in the 2017 budget, $30,000, so.
Yeah.
We, with, even with the lift gate, we'd be able to come very close to doing that, so.
Any other discussion, questions? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve resolution 2017-36 authorizing the purchase of, whoever makes the motion can make that determination.
Yeah, I'll make the motion for the Ford.
Okay, we have a motion by Diane to purchase the 2017 Ford F-250 four-wheel-drive crew cab at John Wees Ford for $28,953, and did you want the lift gate down there?
Yes, yes, add the lift, lift gate.
And then also purchase lift gate.
Yep.
Do I have any, uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave, any other questions, concerns?
Do I need to have down there the sales taxes and licenses now, okay, alright.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, five in favor, none against. Approved chloride treatment areas.
For the past several years, you know that we have allocated funds for liquid chloride treatment on Hickman Drive, which is the, then, off the end of Hickman where the gravel goes out to Ferry Lake Road. Several years ago, we reconfigured that road a little bit, put class five on it, and then we chloride it just to keep it, stay put, and we've been doing that, but now several homeowners have requested that we have it on their gravel roads as well. We have received requests from Lincoln, which is between Sinclair Lewis and Second, right next to where Wayne parks their trucks, and, or Walter's Trucking, I should say, and then the second one was Fourth Street South between Alex Moore and Minnette, we've had requests for that street. So I put their footages on there, and then I put all the rest of the footages of the other gravel streets, so we can have a little bit of a discussion on our chloride treatment program. I did put on there, you know, we do have, we've budgeted to do Hickman, I mean, that's not a problem. If we do the two that have also requested, that's another $700, if we do them all, it's another $2,900, so you can kinda see, if we did everything, we're looking at about $4,700 total, or you could, you know, cross a few of them off, or just stay with the Hickman, but we need to be able to take an answer back to the people that have requested that we put it on their streets, and I don't know if any of you have received phone calls from any of them. And then we need to, you know, discuss, are we gonna have a liquid chloride treatment program, and if we are in the future, then we need to start budgeting for that. You can, you know, by motion decide to spend more than the budget on that if you so choose, or you can stick to the budget and talk about it at budget time. So we're kinda looking for direction from you, we don't wanna just make an arbitrary decision of who we're, who's gonna get it and who's not, you know, at a staff level. So when they call, we can tell them, you guys decided.
Dern Johnson.
I know last, last year, we had done numerous, we had done other streets other than Hickman last year, didn't we?
We had done some on Lincoln, because they were doing some work and it was causing a lot of dust, and then we had a detour on Pine up on the north end, just that one block, some work was doing on 71, so they were using that as a detour, so that did get some chloride. They're not on our regular program to do it.
Right.
The PUC does, we do it the same time, we do the road to the water treatment plant, but they pay that part of it, so that's not in our budget.
'Cause I did receive a phone call last year about the one up by Fourth Street South between Alex Moore and Minnette, that one there was one of the high points, wanted to know why we only did certain roads in town and not all of them, and why some people could have dust-free zone and the rest of them couldn't, so.
Well, it was kind of traffic count-based.
Right.
I guess I'd kinda like to have this as a budget item, I guess I'd kinda like to stay the line on this.
I agree with Keith, 100% on that.
You're saying as far as doing it all?
No, just do what we.
Agreed to.
Do what we planned for.
Planned for.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it should basically be Hickman?
Yeah.
And then when we do the budget, you know, if we've got a little extra, we can look at doing the other.
Okay, so we budgeted, uh, is it 1,100?
Mm-hmm.
$1,100.
Yeah.
So if we, $3,600, we could do it all, so $4,700.
You know, there is the, there is the option, if people on the street, they want it, you know, we can do it and they can pay for it. It's, that's one thing, like, we put chloride on the gravel streets, but we don't put them on the tar streets, and then you kinda get, like, why do they get that every year, and what do you do for us every year, we paid for a road, and, you know, you, that's what happens when you have a mix of kind of roads, so that's the thing, is that you have to, I know in the township, they do it that way, I don't know many cities that do, because most cities, you know, by the time they get to that point, are already paved, so they don't have an issue.
Yeah, no, I can definitely understand, but it, it always, it seems like there's all these extras pop up, like taxes on the, on the truck we just bought, and you just don't figure a lot of that in, and I guess I'd like to be a little proactive this fall and figure it in, but.
Yeah, I agree, I, you know, I hate to keep getting things outside of the budget all the time.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Guess I'll get the call this year.
His number is 352.
Would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we, um, we, is it just Hickman?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will make a motion that we, um, put the chloride treatment on the original, um, street or drive, and at the cost that was.
Budgeted.
Budgeted.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Diane, we have a motion to approve chloride only on Hickman Drive. Then we have a motion, a second, is there any other comments, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Also on that same subject, I think we still got in on our five-year plan eventually to be getting.
Yeah.
Paving all of these anyway, so about the time we would tell somebody they're paying for their chloride, and then we come along and tear it up and make an hour out of it and they get the assessment.
That would be great, stick to that.
Okay, approve resolution 2017-37 adopting Stearns County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay, as you know, that the city has participated in the Stearns County Hazard Mitigation Plan, it is currently being updated again for 2018, I have been going to those meetings, it's a countywide plan, and what they do is they do risk assessment, like identify hazards like tornadoes, floods, storms, things that would be, something that would happen in Stearns County, and then they have goals on how they would deal with it when the time comes. One of the parts of the plan is you list potential projects within your city to help mitigate risk, and so we had identified in the past, and some of these are the same that we have in the plan already, and if you put them in the plan, then if there is a disaster and funds are allocated for this disaster, then grants become available, and if you're in the plan already, then you're eligible to apply for those. So we put some things in the plan, and that, we would then be eligible for grants if the money is available, and usually there's a disaster at least once a year, that, that money flows into this fund. And so the things that we have in the plan are to replace some of the old sirens, now we have two newer ones, we still have some old ones, that we could get grant assistance for those, provide power to the water plant and wells by purchasing a generator, to upgrade the Sinclair Lewis storm shelter or build a fairground shelter, construct a community safe room, could be a community safe room somewhere else in the city that residents could go through, not necessarily the campground or the, or the fairgrounds, to convert any occupied land in the floodplain to open space, like areas that's prone to flooding, if you know, like in Grand, if you've ever been to East Grand Forks, that whole blocks of the city, it's an Iowa State Park, I wouldn't say we would go to that extreme, but I mean, it's possible, there could be some homes in the floodplain that you may wanna convert to open space. One of the things that the county has pretty much in every city is installing security fence around the wells, if it ever becomes a time when that becomes necessary, you wanna protect your wells, that, that would be in the plan, and then also to, to increase drainage catch basins in areas of the city that are prone to flooding. So these are the things that we have identified through our committee work, that the city of Sock Center should perhaps include in that plan, and it just kinda sets us up for the ability to apply for grants in the future. So that's what I'm asking for you tonight, is to approve that resolution 2017-37, adopting the plan by including these seven items for the city of Sock Center in it.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-37 adopting the Stearns County All Hazard Mitigation Plan?
So.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Dave, any other questions, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, comprehensive plan update.
Just a little update on the comp plan, we had, Task Force held its second meeting on May 30th, and we did, I did attach a document in here about the status report, they have ser, they have survey, or finalized the survey, and it is out on Survey Monkey for people to take up till the 23rd of July. We also have hard copies available, you can pick them up at the library, City Hall, and the senior center, if you want a hard copy, if you don't have access to a computer. We are having our first public meeting outreach, which is actually gonna be at the craft fair at Sinclair Lewis Days, we'll have a tent there, and then we'll be, people will be able to ask questions and receive information at that, so not your typical meeting in City Hall where everybody comes, this is a meeting where people can come for a few minutes and leave if they want. And then we are looking at, they are mapping out, like, the opportunities and everything that are starting to come through on the survey, and so we can kinda get detailed, they can look on it any time to see how many people have responded to that, that survey, and I think we have about 300 responses now, so that's pretty good. And then the paper was really good about putting an article in there, getting the word out, and we've had a lot of businesses and different people that have email, email lists in their computers where they can send them out to people, and so we're trying to reach as many people as we can, and so we've, we've had good luck so far on that. They do say that they are on, on target for their timeline, so I guess that's a good thing to say. And if anybody has any more questions on that, I think Warren and Heidi, you guys were at the meeting, it was just kind of a brief update-type meeting, they're doing a lot of, a lot of work on their end, implementing all our, our maps and data, bringing a lot of data into it, and then I think at the next Task Force meeting, we'll be seeing some of that data, and being able to comment on it and update it, so.
Questions?
I was just gonna say, just for clarification, you had said the survey's open till July 23rd, but it's June 23rd. Oh, June 23rd, I'm sorry, thank you, Heidi. I'm making my summer go away quicker than I thought. I don't do that.
One of the things is that they mentioned is they think a good turnoff for a survey is 10% of the population, and we're at close to 300 right now, so, I don't know, I, I think I'd like to challenge the people of Sock Center to get out and put their two cents in now, because it isn't, the city isn't us five people and the staff that work in City Hall, the city is everybody that lives inside the corporate city limits, so if you have anything to suggest on how you wanna see the city head, now is the time to say it, and the survey's there, and then these meetings when they come up, so.
And you can link to the survey on our website, on the chamber website, on our Facebook, and there also is going to be a flyer in your next PUC bill.
Right.
So we got that worked out, so we'll be stuffing their bill with, with a flyer that talks about, about the comp plan, you can take, you know, the, and that's gonna invite them to come to the tent at the craft fair to get the information.
Right. Don't call me, put on the survey, you'd want more chloride treatments.
Okay, moving on, airport runway update.
Just give you a little brief update on the runway, the pre-construction meeting was on May 30th, the contractor is starting on June 12th, which is next Monday, so there'll be things that'll happen out there, we'll, we'll be closing the runway, the turf runway will remain open at 1,900 feet, and so it'll be a reduced length, but you will be, they will be able to fly into the turf runway, we have it arranged that you will be able to get fuel, at this point, there'll be a time when we'll have to take out that part of the apron so we can redo it, but at this point, you know, if, they'll be able to fly in and get fuel if you can land and take off on 1,900 feet of turf. We did send a, a letter out to all our hangar renters to let them know that that was the case, and then of course, the pilots will receive it all by NOTAM when the time comes, and they have 60 working days to get the project done, and they're gonna go at it, so a lot of the project is gonna be excavation and grading, and then the electrical work, so we'll see how well it goes.
Questions? Okay, HC, Kate's Estates Drive update.
Evening, mayor and council, other than what's already written here in your update, I can just tell you the sanitary sewer was actually just completed earlier this evening, so that is installed, they're working on backfilling that and getting that up to, up to speed, up to its final grade, and they'll be starting on water main tomorrow morning, so probably the rest of this week, a day or so next week, and then they'll start into the street work after that, so it's moving, moving right along, any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no new business, this now brings us to our consent agenda, we have scheduled claims, unpaid claims of $93,766.06, paid claims of $1,242.31, for a total of $95,008.37. We also have a contribution from the men's card-playing group of $168.49 to be allocated to the senior center, and I wanna thank them for that contribution on behalf of the city. We have resolution number 2017-39 approving an off-site gambling permit for the Sock Center American Legion Post 67, the permit would allow a raffle to be held on July 26th through 30th, 2017, at the Stearns County Fairgrounds. We also have a resolution number 2017-40 approving an off-site gambling permit for the community connections of Sock Center, the permit would allow a raffle to be held on August 26th, 2017, at the American Legion. Is there any questions? Is there any questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Keith, any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. We have no informational items.
I do have a brief one. Household hazardous waste is this coming Wednesday. It's finally here, so Wednesday from nine to one at the arena parking lot, Wednesday the fourteenth, for anybody listening, but, so they'll be good to go.
Okay.
I volunteered to work up there.
Good. Alright, that brings us to the end of our agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against, meeting adjourned.